At this point. We have a call, I'd like to call the meeting to order. At 7:31 PM. And do roll call. See you on the Zoom call, do you see us? Do you hear us, okay, thumbs up?
Both, yeah.
Alright, then. Do a roll, Chair Luke Wujek, I am here. Vice Chair Andrea Tesman.
Here.
Commissioners Chris Aylott.
Here.
David Goodman. David?
No.
Okay, and Daryl Lambert.
Here.
Hi, I'm here, sorry, Dave, this is David.
Okay, good, good. Can you raise your hand there? And Steve Smith sent an email that his son is doing some athletic prowess and he would be significantly late. So after that. Look for a move to approve the agenda as written. So move. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The agenda is approved? Are there any public comments or items are not on the agenda? You seeing none? Let's see now, we'll move on to the council liaison report.
Greetings Commissioners, it's great to be back here in the chambers with you all, even if I am on this side of the this kind of data.
You're awesome.
Data. Panel. Got a couple of things I wanted to mention about our recent happenings in the city, at least with regard to what council has been doing and what we're working on. We approved a utility agreement between the city and the tribe for additional wastewater management for the hotel expansion at the casino. They're going to be adding a number of rooms and they gave more capacity for wastewater treatment, so we approved an agreement with them. The tribe is going to pay the city over $6 million for increased water treatments capacity. And a tremendous amount of work went into this agreement, so it's something we should be really proud of with the work the administration did on that. And this does replace a prior agreement that had covered a lower amount of wastewater treatment. This agreement is mutually beneficial to the city and to the tribe, and that it will bring additional economic activity to both the city and the tribe. The other main thing that I want to talk about here is that the city administration unveiled the mayor's proposed capital improvement plan for 2022 to 2028. There are two, just a little background how CIPs work, especially for our newer members to decommission. There are two broad groups of projects and programs, there's the utility CIP and there's the non-utility CIP. The utility CIP covers things related to water and sewage and that sort of stuff, and they're paid for mostly by the fees that we pay as homeowners or users. The non-utility CIP is pretty much all the other stuff, so that's going to be parks and roads and bridges and trails and structures, that sort of stuff. And each of these two groups are further broken down into two major categories, where we have programs and we have projects. The programs are ongoing scheduled things that are just the normal happenings of a city, wear and tear of roads, replacing playground equipment, those kinds of things are programs, and they just are ongoing things. And then projects are new things, a good example would be like the proposed expansion to the community center. There are dozens of programs and projects that are in this CIP, and they're in various levels of funding. Some of them have all the funding in place and are essentially ready to go if council gives approval to them. There are other things that are partially funded and that we are likely to get the rest of the funding, but it hasn't been fully secured yet. And then there are some things that have really no funding mechanism yet to speak of. And generally, those are lower priority things anyway. So the most, the highest priority things are generally either fully funded already or at least partially. All of that would have to be approved by council, but at least that's what the those are the programs and projects that have been proposed by the city administration. You can find all of the proposed programs and projects on the CIP, on the city website. And there will also be a capital improvement plan open house at City Hall on June 9th at 6pm. And that was all that I had to bring to you folks, but I'd be happy to stay and answer any questions you might have.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yep.
First, how many rooms did the tribe say they were going to that hotel?
First of all, I'm not sure that I can answer that, I don't know if it's public yet. But it's, and I don't actually have the number right in front of me anyway, but I believe it's going to be somewhere in the range of a couple of hundred-ish.
Wow, okay, pretty solid.
I think.
And then you mentioned.
Don't quote me on that.
Okay. You mentioned about the dozens of priorities in the capital budget?
Yeah.
And that some.
Capital improvement plan, not budget.
Oh, I'm sorry. And that some are higher priority than others, so just wanted to be curious, how high is the pool in the funding priority?
I'll ask that one moment. Should have brought this up with me. To begin with, let me find the list real quick to see. Currently, that one is in the partially funded category. Under the current one. Current proposal, I should say.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, other council members? Help me out if the order can fit, you see a hand up? Any other questions? Or Commissioner Johnson, I'm sorry, Councilor Johnson?
That's okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to approval of planning commission meeting minutes. We'll break it up between the May 2nd, 2022 and May 16th, 2022, so first. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes as written for May 2nd, 2022. So moved? Second?
Second.
Okay, did the discussion before we vote? Okay, then all in favor, say aye.
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 May 6th, if you minutes are approved as written. I'll move on to the May 16th, 2022 minutes, kind of a motion to approve. So moved? And second?
My second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Hey, I was just looking at this, that one was, we did have a court, so that was pretty easy, so both of the, it's as written or approved. Alright, at this point, we move on to the permit design, permit review and designing. And DRB 2022-0005 crab commercial.
Dylan Gamble will do the presentation on this, you can see from the agenda, we have an open record public hearing to start, and then official discussion of the project, so we'll let Dylan introduce it first, and then we can see if there's any further comments to take.
Okay.
Alright, give me a sec, so I can get my, my sea legs out. A refresher on standing at a podium again, so this is the design review for the project, DRB 2020-005. Okay, is this more broken for everyone? I'm just gonna assume it is unless someone says it's not. So this is the design review project 2020, 22-0005 crab commercial, it's a two-story development on Railroad Avenue, kind of near the intersection. The kind of specific details of this project that are different than other ones that we've had for review lately are that this is not in the historic district. Those are probably, so therefore, a few of the code sections that we've utilized in the past when reviewing developments do not apply to this development specifically. So that's one thing you'll want to keep in mind, and we'll get more into the details there as we walk through the project more specifically. But I'll try to keep us, you know, hemmed in as much as I can, but there's going to be some things that are generally applicable in both state and both ways, so that's the first and foremost difference between this and other projects that you've seen in the last year, or maybe more actually, because I think it's been a little while. The other part is that there is a public hearing for this, so I want to leave room for a public hearing before we get started on a lot of the description, and so yeah, I guess I'll pause right there and let you decide if you want to do the public hearing right now, or if you'd like me to do a full presentation of the project first.
Let me call the public hearing to order at 7:40 on June 6th. And the hearing is now open for any public comments. Mark, give it up now if you see the heads raised, I can't see this screen.
So for the record, we have no attendees. So nobody, there is no way to raise their hand in the attendee list.
Okay. Woo, success. Alright, without further ado, then at 7:41, we'll close the public hearing. 12622. And go ahead and go with the project.
Before we proceed, you should note for the record that we did receive one comment letter from Richard Anderson of the Northwest Railway Museum. It was transmitted to the planning commission on Friday evening, I believe, so you should have that available to you, and it will be part of the record for this project.
Yeah, and to add some depth to that comment letter is very focused on a lot of the aspects that wouldn't necessarily be part of a design review, but rather the requirements the planning department has to review a project for its meeting, various state codes and policies, so for example, is this project going to do such and such with shoreline permitting? While that's not necessarily a design review element for the planning commission, it is something the planning department has to review independent of the design review. So many of the questions were not necessarily for the planning commission's review, so I included in the email that I sent out previously, but I'm not going to address every single question from that, but please feel free to review the, the email and let it stand however you feel is important for the designer view. So I'm not going to spend a ton of time on my staff work because I wrote it and I don't need to see it anymore. But please review this if you want me to call back to it, I have it open. I'll go to the pretty pictures instead, actually, one thing first. If I can get my little screen share thing out of the way. I just kind of want to show you where this project is located because some clarity there might be helpful, so downtown, obviously, go and zoom in kind of the intersection of Meadowbrook and Railroad Avenue, and I'm going to let you think about this while I go and grab my mouse, because I can't do this. Sorry, apologies for that, so here is the location, it's kind of a strange parcel, so to speak, it's a funny triangle here near the intersection. And proposed development is actually going to maintain kind of some of what you see here in terms of the access points to the, to the lot. But you'll notice that the lot kind of keeps on shrinking into infinity here towards this access road. And if you've been driving on this road, know that this building here is a psychic, it was currently in business right now and is proposed to maintain this location, so I'm going to go back to the site plan and kind of walk through some of the details of the site plan. So, let's see here, here's some colored photos, and I'm going to take this up to the to the top of this document. Which shows kind of like the layout in terms of its alignment with the road and the street. And the railroad tracks that are behind it. And this is important just because the shape of the lot is a little bit more unusual, I just wanted to help kind of align your perspective, so this is the railroad track right here. Is back behind the building, this is Railroad Avenue or SR202. The parking lot, which currently exists, it's a gravel parking lot, this is the psychic shop that I pointed out, and then this is the proposed building site. And all these little circles are some variation of different types of shrubs, two trees, different landscaping details. This has got a little patio on the back, and it is including these parking spots which are currently not designated, so to speak, it's just a gravel lot and then currently it kind of fades from gravel onto grass to the end of the property line. They use it currently for storage of vehicles in this area, so some light utility storage vehicles, I think tree trimming trucks or random vehicles for sale. Kind of in that, in that range, so the proposed site will kind of take that place. Some of the details I want to call out that are important for review are that this site is going to be used for what they've mentioned to us is some potential for light industrial, which will require a conditional use permit from the planning department, so we're going to review that at a later time. That's not necessarily part of the design review aspect, but it is something to be aware of as we work through this. And the upper floor is just office space, which is a outright permitted use at this site, which is zoned PG, sorry. Within the PG zoning, the light industrial use is conditional, so they require a conditional use permit, but the upstairs office space is completely allowing. The building is two stories, as you kind of saw on the earlier slides, and I'll get back to those in a second. It has a variety of I guess you'd call them Pacific Northwest design features with wood shake siding as well as, I believe, horizontal siding, I'll zip back to that in a second. The last thing I want to call out is some details that we've worked with the designer on to verify we're here, and that is an enclosure for the trash or recycling equipment facilities area, as well as more detailed landscaping requirements for the SR202 road. Specifically, you'll see that the, this building is going to be right, they have it proposed here, right up to the property line, which would require some of the landscaping to end up at the city's right-of-way to SO2, SR202, so on the highway. I can go to a Google map or even parts of Europe, any of you are interested, it's pretty tight within the property line, and this is a generally accepted option for, for the developer. And then the landscaping that continues in the parking lot was a recommendation for kind of meeting some of the city's more landscaping focused goals. One thing you will notice is that if you're looking towards the backside of this building, there is no landscaping set up for the boundary between the right-of-way for the Northwest Railway Museum's parcels and this one. One thing of note for that is that most landscaping is required on every boundary, but this one is maybe a bit different in that the Railway Museum already has several trees and shrubs, I can pull up the map, but it's essentially green, greenery, there's a lot of trees and shrubs that go between the parking lot and where the site is mostly proposed, so at this time, we're not projecting more requirements for landscaping than what you see here. But that's definitely something to consider as, you know, we work through this, and I'll, I'll leave room for you to talk for a minute, I just want to show you the last some last bits of details, which are on the facade work. While this facade detailing, you'll know from historic design review standards, it's pretty specific, and it calls out a variety of historic facade characteristics, that is not necessarily true of design review standards, however, this is a pretty solid facade portfolio, so to speak, with that Pacific Northwest theme, and so while it might not be called upon in specific design review things, it's not wildly inaccurate for the cultural aesthetic, so to speak, the styling of Super West or the buildings surrounding it. And I should, I suppose, note that the buildings are in the area which is called Masara Corner, we'll actually go back to. So this whole intersection area is called Masara's Corner, it's called in our comp plan, and at the current time, the intersection is predominantly I'm sorry, it's not predominantly, it's almost completely vehicle access, parking is kind of at the forefront of most of these businesses in that they don't have great or even reasonable access for pedestrians, and the side of the street that we're talking about, there is only, I'm sorry, sidewalk right next to herpes, there's the milk bar, and across the street, there's some sidewalk as well, but it does have a negative in that cars are going pretty quick, and there's limited protections from cable traffic, also less access for pedestrians and that there's not other things that pedestrians access while walking, kind of a general playing thing.
Just to point out, 900000 out there is the middle school. And if you go down the other way, you run into high school, you actually can see one of the fields of the high school. I don't know what direction it is, but above 8995, go in the direction you actually get to the high school. So it is, yeah, right there, proximity of middle school and high school.
Yes, yeah, definitely. Yep, thank you. Okay, so with that in mind, the reason I was bringing up Masara's Corner and the science text is that the comp plan calls out a couple of characteristics, which are that this area is predominantly vehicle access businesses commercial. And that there is no historic character of Masara's Corner, it's, they're not all in the same architectural styling or design, so there's not a prevailing design to hold, so to speak, as long as it's not too far from the existing, which will allow you to judge of that, but I kind of want to pause, because I've been speaking for quite a while. And give you a chance to ask maybe some questions and then give you a sec to rally myself, but make sure I'm not missing anything to add.
So there's hands up, why don't we start with Christian Aylott?
Straight out of Mr. Anderson's questions, number 10, how does the West overflow parking lot connect with local roads?
Gotcha, okay, so the parking lot you're referring to, this one, is that correct?
That's the east lot, the west lot is the other side of the building.
The other side of the building, sorry.
So the way it's connected is you can, if Dylan can pull up one of the building renderings, but there's it's not obviously in the plan view, but there's roll-up garage doors on both sides, so so you can see on this is the best view, so the one in the upper right is showing the garage door, there's two garage doors there, that's the site, that's the south facade, and if you scroll, there you go, that's the north side, so you can drive through the building to get to that, so it's not really parking per se, it's really more storied, more of a storage area.
Understood, thank you for that clarification.
Anything else, Christian Aylott?
That was my only question.
Okay, Vice Chair Tesman?
Thank you, Chair, three questions, one, two of them are related to each other, so I guess depending on the answer, the first one will kind of dictate the other. So first question is procedural, and that was you alluded to a review for the business activity as light industrial, so just to be clear, then, will this planning commission also review that business purpose at a later time? Or is this the only decision point for, for this development, for this commission?
So to answer that question, the planning commission is sitting as the designer review board right now, so you're in the position of reviewing and making a decision on the design of the building. What you don't do is decide on the uses within the building, that's outside of the, of the planning permission authority. If the, if there is a light industrial use proposed for the building, if somebody wanted to move in there, it requires a conditional use permit, as Dylan explained. That is a decision for the city's hearing member. And there's a whole set of criteria for a conditional use permit, so the planning commission would not see that come back to, to answer your specific question.
Okay, got it, that's helpful, so it's not a question for decision-making, just a question for learning, what what is the scope of light industrial include? So like this, this seems like, almost like an equivalent setup as a Jiffy Lube across the street. Is, is, is that what, is Jiffy Lube, for example, light industrial?
Well, so Jiffy Lube as an example, or, or businesses like that would be considered an automotive type use, so there's, you know, we have vehicle sales, gas stations, service and repair, auto body painting, so there's different categories, and different ones of those are allowed outright versus being conditional uses versus not allowed, so as an example, if it's general, the PG zone vehicle sales are not allowed at all. Whereas vehicle service or repair is an outright permitted use, so we might broadly speaking call that a light industrial use, but in the city's code, it's considered an automotive use and it's permitted outright. An auto body or a painting, an auto painting use is a conditional use, so it requires a conditional use permit. A car wash is permitted outright, so that's an example of at least automotive related uses on the light industrial side, so a, you know, a warehousing use, for example, is a conditional use. You know, a, a heavy manufacturing factory is not allowed at all, or but a light industrial use would be a conditional use, so there's, there's kind of a range in there. And ultimately, the decision on what category use fits into is made by, by the community development director, and that based on that, it requires a conditional use permit, or it's not allowed, or it's allowed outright, so it's a essentially an internal administrative process to kind of figure out where it lies within the code.
Okay, that's, that's hugely helpful, thank you.
On the screen, so you can actually see what I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's, 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 now I know where to go, that's perfect. I really appreciate that. And then finally, the third question I had was just to make sure my understanding is right, so like when I look at this site on, on Google Earth, and you can bring up the Google Earth if it helps, but I see next to the railroad, call it a six-foot width of shrubbery, you're saying that will stay as part of the railroad's property? And then the greenery planned on the site then would, would basically abut that in addition to the parking lot? Is that accurate?
The landscaping for this property ended being a bit tricky admittedly, because it's such a long, narrow piece, and you know, if you start, the more landscaping you require on the site, the less space there is to actually do anything on the site, so we start getting this tricky issues of, we start getting frankly some tricky taking issues really fast. Now, from a practical standpoint, as you, as you just identified and Dylan spoke to before, there's trees and shrubs on the, on the railroads right of way far right now, which you can see there, so that's not likely going away, now certainly the railroad is going to, the Northwest Railway Museum to be specific here, is going to maintain their rail line, so that they can continue operations, they don't have, you know, hazards, et cetera, et cetera. You know, and they would be with, I will say, the Railway Museum, because it is a, a full-on, you know, regulated railroad, it's not just a random, you know, used park. It is a real railroad, they would be within their rights to add additional traffic subject to the processes that has to go through, you know, and they could remove the landscaping, but that's they're not proposing that now, and they've never indicated desire to do that in this location, so those trees and shrubs are likely to stay in some fashion forward.
Gotcha, okay. Awesome, thank you, no, thank you.
Okay, sorry, it's very long-winded answers.
Mr. Goodman?
Thanks, just clarifying an earlier point that Dylan made is, does this project include a sidewalk improvement, or no?
No, I think sidewalk on the, okay. I'm hoping that this is a lot of I'm hoping that this is a lot of.
I mean, I realize there's not one right now, I'm just, but is that part of the redevelopment, or it's not?
The short answer is no. The longer answer is no, because if we would A, create a disperated sidewalk, if B, because it doesn't go anywhere. There's no sidewalk north of, southeast Ninetieth Street, which is the private crossing of railroad or, or falls out when it comes back in. There's just no pedestrian facility on that side, all the way up to you gotta go all the way up to River Street.
I think it is River Street, there's even the parking, ample parking there, there has, there's no sidewalk too.
So, so one, there's no pedestrian facility down that side of two oh two anyway, and there's no near term plan to create one further down, so we wouldn't do that. Second of all, as Dylan was talking about, there's, this is an area where auto access is predominant right now, and there's no, and because, for various reasons, so Dylan zooms out a little bit on his parcel viewer here. Zoom out a little bit more, and I want to see to the west a little bit, so as you can see, there's several houses there, back in the west, west of River Avenue, but that's a, in case you didn't know, that is a giant well left in there, and Kibble Creek goes through there, and Kibble Creek's loose, so there's no way to grow more houses back in there, first of all. And this, as you see along these properties, one to three properties, three or four properties along this little stretch, so I, you know, certainly in the longer term, it may be desirable to the city to go in and construct a better pedestrian facility along this stretch, but right now, it's frankly not warranted, considering the predominant mode of access and the fact that it would be connected to or enhancing the pedestrian network.
Thanks, maybe, maybe I'm, my understanding was that generally in cases like this, the development would be responsible for the cost of installing sidewalks, but you're telling me that's not, that's not the case here?
Not, not for this, I mean, certainly it would, it could slash, would be installed in the right of way, but there's, there's also no no curb drainage in that particular area, so the other thing we'd look at, of course, is where's, where are the drainage, there's no drainage on that side two oh two, in fact, it's on the other side. You can even see some catch bases if you kind of zoom in and scroll around, you don't have to do it there. So, so in this case, no, there wouldn't be a sidewalk installed, to directly answer the question.
Okay, I mean, I realize it's not a, not a pedestrian hotspot necessarily, but gotta start somewhere, okay, thank you.
Yeah, understood.
Are there questions, Commissioner Givitt?
Thank you.
Commissioner Ailish, any other questions?
No more questions?
Sorry, I do have one, what about the setbacks on the property lines? Does that look in our review, or is that outside of us?
Technically, it's outside, but I've already reviewed these for, so business general has very minimal setbacks, in fact. I can show you, I was just about in that area when I was hearing the code section. You can go and find this in here as well, but I think the setback is zero for, for the building, so that's why it's allowed to be so close. However, you will notice in the design, just, just a couple of points of clarification for how the setback thing works. In, in one of Richard's comments, mentioned that the site appeared to extend into the neighboring property line, well, it might be slight on this map. It is there, that won't, that is not permissible, not without permission, and currently that just doesn't happen. Same thing for gable roofs. To no overhangs into the neighboring property, even though the setbacks are limited, they are part and best. The landscaping setbacks is a closer catch there, which is why they have so much at the front, and why we had to address the railroad, minimizing of the setback, the landscaping requirement, I should say.
Any other questions, Chris?
I was trying to think if I had anything else that I wanted to bring up, I went scrolling through my staff report, and nothing caught my attention, that I don't believe we've already addressed one way or another, whether it's questions or me rambling for as long as I did. But again, if there's any other questions of the project, I can explain that, or I can explain kind of the steps that we're at.
Could you scroll down to the visual of the project?
My computer does not like scrolling like this.
Yeah, the color of visual is something to look at.
This one's, I believe this is, if you were standing on the highway, kind of in between where the proposed building is and the site.
Think you'd be standing in the travel lane to get that view.
Yeah, yeah, this, this would be an odd position to be in, actually, you know what, the, the road is a bit higher than the site, so maybe it wouldn't be that bad.
Right, I was just looking at the color schemes, these are all in alignment with the color schemes?
So I'm glad you mentioned that, this is an example of where the historic district doesn't, it doesn't extend into the design review, there's no color requirement in the way that there is for the historic district. We kind of think of it as, this is designed if a city were to show up and it had no history, right? There's no color requirements unless you add enough, well, we don't have any right now, but in Stokewarm's Historic District, we're trying to capture the intent of the people who are laying down the rules at the time, and there's colors involved in that. So that's why the Historic District has that color palette, but the design review doesn't. And so, no, this is not, not within that, I do believe there is one thing about high biz colors not being permitted. But that, I wouldn't say neither of these are high biz colors.
It's addressed in the staff report, there is a specific provision about, it says, painted material colors shall be selected to coordinate the entire facade and to be compatible with the adjacent buildings. And brighter brilliant colors shall be used only for accent. So, you know, some of, some of you were on the planning permission when the compass project went through design review. That one has, I mean, you can see the building today, it's constructed, but if you recall, at the time, it had some what appeared to be very bright yellow accents on it, which caused some concern, now, at build, it's not an issue. But there's no color palette that can play here, it's really, you know, it's as the criteria says, you know, coordinate the entire facade and be compatible with adjacent buildings. So I'll admit, is that a little big over leave, eh, sure? But we do have, you know, we can say you can't have bright brilliant colors. It's really a question of, do the colors that you can see there, are, do they, you know, do they seem appropriate based on the building's location? And some of the surrounding buildings, I just take into consideration, what do we see built around Stokewarm?
So, I mean, let me test, those yellow beams, are they?
It's wood modeling. I think, I believe they're trying to model wood.
You don't believe they're going to be there, very yellow?
I, I don't think they're going to paint them that funny yellow color, I think they're intended to be timber beams. And the software that models these is modeling it with like a very bright pine, even though we would probably expect to see a more wood tone.
It was all the other basis to look at the color, but it kind of bumped out, and there's a bright color, you're saying it's not going to be a bright color?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, looking at it on the, the screen here, and then looking at it on my laptop screen, but just looking at the rendering in totality, it is, it's rendered very bright, and I think in reality, I mean, look at how the weather's been this spring. You know, anything that's even those colors is going to look darker because it's going to be wet. So you know, the cedar shingle siding you see is not going to be that light brown, it's going to be a darker brown, certainly, and I think the the lighter that kind of off white color of the side is not going to be nearly so bright, and plus, you can, you know, looking at the screen here, council previously, I said a lot of the detail, you can't even see the horizontal detail of a lot of the wood side, because it's just got blown out in this rendering. I mean, I can't even see it on my laptop screen, so I think what you're seeing is largely an artifact of the whole image is just too bright. As a rendering, or they're trying to capture what would look like a bright sun in August.
Yeah, well, the point of concern was the bright yellow.
You know, and frankly, you know, and as the criteria says, you know, bright or brilliant colors shall only be used for accents, I mean, if if you're concerned about it, we can absolutely condition it to say, don't, don't use the bright yellow, make it a more neutral natural color or sort of something else, it's certainly acceptable to say that.
Yeah, just, just a, a more neutral, let's write the, then ask writer. I suspect, remember this discussion, that they'll go back and say we always tend to.
Yeah, I mean, I'm uncertain, it was supposed to be timbers, so I don't know if any wood timber that would be that, like that bright.
Yeah, if that's the case, it's just a, it is a misrepresentation of the rendering.
I was looking to see if they had a call out for the material type, but I don't remember if I read it, or if I had it in my mind as part of the conversation with the developer.
Any other commissioners have comments on the rendered picture, other than what we've discussed? Okay? Then why don't you move it to the staff recommendation?
Okay, I had here, I added ahead of time, five conditions of approval for this project to try to capture some of the realities of development timing, so you'll see in here that some of these are actually to try to protect against the fact that they didn't provide all the details upfront. One of the more common ones we see is lighting fixtures are not usually called out in designs at this stage of their development, but we put in here oftentimes that the site lighting needs to be reviewed by someone in the planning department, or the community development director telling someone else to review the lighting fixtures to make sure that they align with the intended approval of the design review. So a lot of these would capture that, but you'll specifically see that I commented three of notice, one, the landscaping plan, just to verify that the plan that they proposed here, A, matches with the the design that they gave us, because we get an official document, usually a landscaping plan that shows exactly this, the plants are going to go where kind of their success. A lot of the plants that we saw in this looked pretty good, but we're going to have someone to verify. And the other aspect of it is impervious surface standards. This is a bit on orange, but I included it here just to kind of reinforce that we're going to be reviewing additional aspects, and one of them is the impervious surface, which is essentially, the lot has a the city of Stokewarm specifically requires that different types of development meet different amounts of imperviousness for rain flow, so to speak, so if it rains, water doesn't pool in the ground. If it pools on a surface, that would be impervious, impervious surface, so in this case, I believe the percentage was, I think it's eighty percent, if I recall, and so one of the reviews we'll have is conditional approval is to verify that they meet the eight percent criteria. So that's kind of an example of how these conditions of approval can be used. So if you wanted, for instance, for me to include the colorway for the colorway requirement that you mentioned, I could easily add that into these conditions of approval. But otherwise, they're kind of standard. A building permit must be required, it's pretty much on every single condition of approval I've ever written. And all the onsite landscaping damages are really a way to capture a kind of tricky element of design review, which is that landscaping must be, you must mitigate the potential for damage to landscaping for vehicles, pedestrians. Not a lot of pedestrian access, unless you just have people going astray, kicking trees or whatever, but the intent there is to make sure that the, think of it as like the parking lot, when somebody pulls into their parking spot, they're not just destroying the shrubbery or the landscaping every time somebody pulls in too far. So to mitigate that, I included this comment.
Okay, and just to understand, once this is approved, what is their timing, is it approved for this design indefinitely, or do they have a certain time which they have to act?
So they will likely get going on this relatively quickly, this is just me speaking for the developer right now. They do have a test to develop this within, within a normal period of time, so first that. Second, a lot of different permits have different timelines. Insofar as they don't modify this design such that it goes against the intent of approval, or the conditions of approval, what's the timeline, Jason, is it?
So, to the broad question, strictly speaking, the designer review approvals do not ever expire. However, from a practical standpoint, what you end up with is that because the building codes get updated every five years, enough will change with the building code, that they will be forced to make some kind of modifications to the building if they don't build it within that timeframe, and we saw this with the project over at Middlebrook and Park Street where the original designer review approvals from twenty seventeen. In the meantime, some building codes changed, it had to enclose stairwells, that require them to return to the designer review board to review those changes, so practically speaking, you know, while it doesn't expire, if they don't build it in the next couple of years, they're going to have to come back to us, and with, with some level of change to, you know, to re-review it.
And what's building codes going to change?
You know, more broadly, you know, we have been looking at some procedural things for the designer review process, this is one of them, putting some balance on how long does I review approval look good for? Because we, we don't like having zombie projects sitting out there. But that's a different discussion from what you have in front of you.
Okay, at this point, any other questions from commissioners? And I entertain a motion to approve DRB two two dash zero 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 five. Come on up. Have a second.
Okay.
Wait, discussion, we'd like to propose we amend the condition, you just say, have a you know my concern about the bright, was there a way to read the condition that put in the more neutral colors?
Yeah, we can, we can add a condition to, to, you know, say this out loud. The color of the exposed wood beams shall be a natural or neutral color and not a bright color.
Yes, in other words, that's perfect.
Okay.
So with that condition added, all and these additional five conditions, all in favor, say aye.
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 They oppose? Do I have? So DRB two two dash zero 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 five with conditions is approved. Okay, thank you. So on other business, noting that there's a couple of us here, we do have training next week on June fourteenth, the parliamentary procedure training, and that is in person in this, in the city hall, so we do need to be here for that.
Yeah, so that is a, a special joint meeting, as the terminology goes, with the city council for parliamentary procedure training, it's here in the council chambers. It is technically a hybrid meeting, so if you need to or wish to participate remotely, that's okay, but please contact Devostrata, the city clerk, in advance, so that she knows who to expect here, and who to expect online, it helps us with planning and running the meeting.
Oh, really?
Yes, so it's next Tuesday, fourteenth, at six, starts at six P M. And it should run for about two hours.
Okay, and I stand corrected, I didn't know there was a hybrid option, so yeah, please do attend that meeting.
We do strongly encourage you to be here in person if at all possible, it's, it does help, but we also recognize that people have various other considerations, whether you're traveling or, or you know, health, health concerns, or whatever it may be that, you know, you can, you need to do what's best for you, but the meetings are all hybrid with an encouragement of in person at this point. Okay? And then to help you guys out, the June twentieth regular meeting of the planning permissions canceled, so that is also, that is Juneteenth, we're still working through the exact logistics, because it's now an official state holiday, and we are working through getting that holiday set up here at the city, it's, it's a holiday for one of the bar, for one of the bargaining units, it's not strictly speaking a holiday for everybody else yet, but it's, you know, it's on. So if the meeting were to happen, they would like to be on Tuesday the twenty first. But even so, it's going to get canceled, because we have, internally, in the administration, we have a lot going on that week. We're introduced for some director positions, and there's a lot of other events that are scheduled in that timeframe, so it could be for us to take a break from.
I have, uh, just, uh, I just point my ignorance of the holiday, but Juneteenth is on June twentieth.
Yes. So, so as with many other holidays, uh, Juneteenth is technically on June nineteenth. Because that is a Sunday, it will then fall on the.
The Monday of all. Okay, okay. Okay. Thank you. Uh, items of fun, your interest, so go around the room, around the, the commissioners, so vice chair of testament, any other items of interest?
Uh, just a random one. So a, a while, a while back now, I noticed that, uh, we, we have some electric charging stations there uh, on the street behind railroad avenue. Just curious if there's anything that works to, to get that network expanded in Snoqualmie downtown or, or otherwise.
So I can, I can help with that. There is currently four, I'm sorry, three electric charging stations. There used to be four. Uh, they're recently replaced. One here at city hall, one on Falls Avenue, kind of next to the Valley Record. And then the last one's at the Y M C A. The previous versions have.
Saw them.
Yeah, so the current, current ones that are recently installed have two heads each. So you can actually charge two vehicles at the same time. And the current status is that I'm looking into other opportunities and options and grants. And in addition to that, to see if there's kind of a sweet spot and location to kind of pair all these ideas up. I don't have any current plans and I don't believe anyone else in the city is actively pursuing chargers besides me. So.
There are some additional chargers in the general, in the upper valley. There's a, uh, I can't remember if it's E D go or, or.
Charge point?
Hey, but anyway, there's a D C fast charger at the L F mall over at North Bend off Bendigo. And then of course, there's a Tesla supercharger over by Truck Town. And.
P S V has some, Safeway might have one now.
Yeah, so there are some others around. Uh, but as you can hear, we're, we're, we are looking for other opportunities. Uh, it's just gonna, there's nothing immediately on the horizon.
It's, uh, what's the, what's the, what's the constraint there? Is it vendor interest? Uh, or like property availability, for lack of a better description?
Kind of both. It, it's a combination of, you know, you need to find locations you can put them, uh, first of all. Then securing funding because you have to both get them, of course, wired up electrically, but then set up billing. Uh, so that, that's related to say if we're, if the city were to put one somewhere else on, whether it's on city right of way or a city parking lot of some kind. That can often be a major challenge because you have to have the right electrical setup and you have to figure out how you're going to get communications for the billing aspect. So there are some challenges, but not insurmountable, obviously, but, but there are some of the challenges. On the private side, of course, you have to work, you know, whether it's Tesla or Electrify America or, or E D go or whoever. They have to find a property owner willing to host this and then they, and they have to do the construction, the infrastructure. That has proven, of course, to be somewhat of a challenge for them. So, um, it, it, it's, it remains a work in progress. Everybody is pretty dunk ho about getting more chargers everywhere. But we're certainly going to keep pushing on it.
Can I, to add to that even, there's, uh, some state potential, some state, potential state policies to require new developments to include the electrical panels in place, even if they're not necessarily installed with E D charging equipment at the time. Uh, but they, they have it in, in built in as part of the developmental part. So we're seeing things like that.
Well, awesome. Thank you so much. It's really good to see. So good job.
Commissioner Tesman, anything else?
No, thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Eila?
Items, thank you.
Commissioner Goodman?
Uh, nothing for me. Thanks.
Commissioner Lambert?
Nothing for me. Thanks.
Okay, it, I'll pass as well. That's good for me. So, uh, thank you. And then for the staff, uh, you want to add any more detail for the upcoming schedule?
Uh, no, I think we talked about already the, there's of course the special meeting, the joint meeting of the city council next week for parliamentary procedure training. And then the, the regular meeting to be followed will be canceled. And so the next meeting after that will be in July. It would be scheduled for July fifth, July fourth is a holiday, of course, and it's on a Monday. So the next regular meeting would be Tuesday, July fifth. Uh, we'll see, uh, we'll see about that meeting. At the moment, we have no agenda items, but you know, it's a month away. So that can change.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Come on, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Good night.